Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for May 2nd, 2022. If you would please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father God, we thank you and praise you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to serve. We ask your continued blessings upon our school system, that you continue to give us guidance, and continue to bless our students and staff. These blessings we ask in your Son Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three is Citizens Address the Board. We have one, Ms. Genevieve. If you'd like to come on up.
There you go.
You're welcome.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see y'all. I am here to offer an invitation to all of you from the McIntosh County Family Connection for our Data Walk, which is a, a one time, well, it won't be a one time, it'll be every two or three years that we do this, but it will take place next Tuesday morning, the 10th, at 10 o'clock, at Glory Worship Center in their Fellowship Hall. It is called a Data Walk because I think that's kind of funny. How, it makes me think of that Elephant Walk movie. But, um, but it's a review of pertinent statistics and data pertaining to McIntosh County and Darien, and coastal Georgia, and how we all work with different, within different areas and, and data and statistics. It's great for grant writers like me, or anybody in the school system, the city, the county, that deals with statistics, accurate statistics and data. It will be reviewing the resources that are available, the most accurate resources that are available in the state and the federal resources. Attendees will leave with a list of resources that will help them when they're applying for grants, or just looking up information on any subject. We'll have, uh, uh, safety and crime, health and wellness, um, education, reading, all that kind of stuff. Uh, the Get Georgia Reading websites, the different things that are available for us. Um, it, like I said, it is next Tuesday, 10 a.m., at Glory Worship Center, in their Fellowship Hall. It's free to the public, I have a little blurb and coastal happenings in the newspaper this week, but, um, it, it's, it's gonna be kind of cool. I think it would be benefits a number of different kind of careers, different kind of job, jobs in McIntosh County to, to come and be a part of it, it's hour and a half. And we'd love to see all of y'all each have a personal invitation to come. And I'd love to see you there.
Who's, um, who's gonna be putting it on? Who's gonna do it?
It's gonna be facilitated by the lady who is our Region 12 Data Evaluator person, who's been making, her name is Virginia Dick. But we'll have a lot of Family Connection people there too, um, who are into that kind of thing.
And she's got all the numbers.
Apparently.
Okay.
And, and like I said, everybody will leave with a packet of information.
Right.
And, uh, it, it's gonna be some good discussion, good information.
Okay.
And I'd love to see y'all there.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item, number four, is approval, approval of the work session agenda. Can I have a motion? Motion by Mr. McOliver, second.
Second.
And second by Mr. Hewitt. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Item number five, turn it over to Dr. Pulis.
All right, good evening, everyone. Our first area, Goal Area One, student success. We're blessed this evening to be able to recognize a couple of students that have showed up for their writing skills. And so what I'd like to do is turn this over to Michelle Shichu to talk a little bit about the process and talk about the awards. And then we'll call the students up and then we'll go from there.
Good evening, everyone. No, I don't want to necessarily face you. I'm gonna face your side.
Okay.
Is everything all right? All right. Because I want, you know, to see the students and their families. So, the Young Georgia Authors Writing Competition is, is a competition that Georgia puts on every year. So it's an annual competition. But what's special about it is, uh, every school in Georgia participates. So I just want you to think about that a little bit. And so the winners that we're recognizing tonight, they didn't just win for their schools, which would be amazing.
That's fantastic.
I mean, because we've got a number of students at our school. But these students won for our RESA, so for our Regional Education Agency. And we have sixteen school districts within our agency, thousands of students. So the winners that we're recognizing tonight really beat out some major competition. And we are super proud because, as we know, employers, one of the one thing that they want to have, are good writers, right?
Yes.
So we definitely got that in McIntosh. And we are blessed enough to be able to recognize three different people tonight. And I know that our winner from the middle school was planning to be here, she may, still thought maybe it was at six.
Maybe.
I hope not, but anyway. So, without further ado, do you have the?
I do.
I know that you'll want to, yeah, so here's your mom, so do you mind taking pictures? And y'all, these stories, um, I don't know if they're in your packets, but they're really, really key and, and good, well-written. Good story. Okay.
Okay, you want to start with?
So first, we'll start with our third grade winner, and that's Ms. Kendall Lee. And she won for her story about the giant whale.
What's the deal with the giant whale?
It's a cute story, yes.
Put that like that, and let's take a quick picture. And then if I could get the two administrators coming up as well. And Mom, if you want to come up and take a picture, and then Board, can we come in? We're gonna have to move in a little bit.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to get in this one.
You can get in with us. Oh, you're gonna get in with them, okay.
We'll let you get in.
You got everybody in there?
I'll go that way somewhere.
Right now.
Wait, let Richie out.
Let Richie slide in here. Yep. Next point of accomplishment, congratulations. All right.
All right. Good job. So next, we'd like to recognize our fourth grade student, Mr. Derek Phillips, if you'll come on up. And his story was entitled, "Six Years Later."
Six years later, sounds pretty awesome. If I could get Mom to come up, and everybody else like you did, Derek. Awesome. So what's happened six years later? You want to take a picture?
Yes.
Okay, hold on just a second. Here, I'll take a photo. That back there, one more time, and then we're gonna take angle pictures. We're proud of both of you.
And then I'd just like to say, Olivia Thompson is, is, who's not here from, from the middle school, and she won for her, her piece of work that was called The Weight. And, um, she's a seventh grade student, but what's really neat about her too is, I don't know if you remember, but she also won for the DAR contest, so she must have some pretty good skills. So if she comes, we'll.
That's great, and if she does, we'll try to test to, to do that.
Awesome.
Parents, you guys are welcome to stay. We have more to talk about, or if you'd like to leave, you're welcome to do that as well, but thank you so much. I know that you have to be proud of the accomplishments of, of your children. And so, um, we're extremely proud of them. We also know that they wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for you two. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think Kiwi Jane wants a nap.
She's ready to go.
She's rubbing them eyes.
That play. To get down.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Hey.
Everybody.
She's got the wave right.
She's so long.
She's almost as tall as Kendall.
All right, just a, a reminder, item number two on here is a reminder that the Cat's Whittle Ceremony will be held here, six o'clock next week, we'll put it into the agenda. Um, again, we've got a, we've got the scenario all set up, but that's gonna kick off with our regular business meeting as far as our recognitions. Georgia Milestone Assessment Dates, uh, can you pull that up for us, please? Ms. McNair, you want to talk about that real quick?
Excuse me, um, we actually start next week on Tuesday with our elementary and middle school on the campus, and high school will be starting on the eleventh. Um, we got feedback from our principals during that time, and they wanted to spread the test out a little bit, since we have a long, long window to testing. The great thing about our testing this year is that we're testing early enough with our schedule, where once we get the results back, we can pretty much start right into summer school. So we'll be able to start looking at those results, rather than the kids who didn't do as well, and start mediating and accelerating those in with extra help. So it's gonna be a seamless process to, to look at the results, continue with instruction. So, uh, uh, I've been in other districts where after the test, school kind of stops. We're not doing that, we're going to compete with instruction, and wait until the end of the school, and then during summer school. So, um, summer school, uh, we will take a retest for those students that didn't score high enough on their initial EOG or EOCs. And the high school, middle and elementary schools will be testing the last week in June, which is the 28th and 29th. Okay?
And that's actually the item, next item up here is summer school dates, just so. The intent is that after the milestone, we'll start right back in to preparing students for summer school and getting that going, and then they'll, uh, proceed through June, and then they'll retest at the end of the month. And, you know, the, the suggestion, and I've said this before, was that, you know, we wouldn't want to require students to retest, but we want them to understand the significance of this, and so we're gonna go ahead and proceed like we have in the past.
Our test note should be back in July, so in our August fourth meeting, first of, um, of course, you guys know that, um, test board is at Farborough for a while, so the neighbors, so, and so.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Just again, a couple of the reminders, you'll notice that you have the Underclassmen Honors Night, May the 12th. Senior Honor Night, May the 19th. We have the Senior Luncheon, we've talked about, on June the 2nd. The Baccalaureate Program on June the 2nd. And then the Class of 2022 graduation scheduled for eight o'clock on June the 3rd. So we're excited about that.
What, eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock, we pushed it back because it was, it was still a little hot when we started, but we said eight o'clock. All right? Item 5B, Organizational Effectiveness. Would like to talk about the FY23 Budget Public Hearings, just to go through where we're at. Um, the recommendation is that we set the tentative budget at the business meeting next week, that we have a public hearing on June the 6th at 5:00, and that we have our second public hearing on June the 13th at 5:30, and then we'd roll around into the, the final one at 6:00 thereafter. Item 2, this is the purchase of the computers for Todd Grant's interactive panels. Uh, and again, I, I would ask the Board to consider voting on this this evening. This allows us to get the computers on the back of the new panels that we have, we discussed that at the retreat. Um, they're in limited supply right now, and we're hoping that if, if we can get this through, that we can get that for the price that we currently have.
Dr. Pulis, I have a.
Yes, sir.
Question about the, uh, the computers.
Yes, sir.
Um, and if I may, uh, yeah, there's Rusty. Um, Rusty, now, these, is this the, the computer that makes this thing happen? Or, he said mount it on the back?
Yes, sir, we put them, it's a little teeny tiny computer, they're literally, yeah, big, they're on the back of that board there. Um, we, we attach them directly to the back of the board, that keeps them completely independent of anything else in the room. We've got it like that at Todd, I mean, at the middle school and high school.
Mm-hmm. That allows us, again, that the teachers oftentimes, if they put it to their regular desktop computer, we've had some moments when stuff would pop up, emails would pop up, et cetera, uh, and it comes up on the screen, this alleviates that, and it allows it to be an independent computer system. This would be paid for through S.R. funds. S.R.?
Also alleviating a lot of the cableing issues that we've had in the past, like at Todd Grant, we have, currently, we've got fifty and seventy-five dollars a cable, those go bad frequently.
Mm-hmm.
And we're constantly having to repool those at seventy-five dollars a cable, and things like that. So this is completely eliminating all of that, and keeping that as a true standalone unit that, that makes maintenance a whole lot easier as well.
Okay.
All right, any more questions on the computers? Superintendent recommends approval to purchase computers for Todd Grant Elementary Interactive Panels, not to exceed thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Excuse me. Motion by Mr. Strickles, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McOliver. All those in favor? Opposed? I didn't, did you, I didn't see.
I have that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see.
Fred's hands too far.
So you, um.
I'm good.
You're good, okay. Okay, motion carries five zero.
Next item up here, item three, discussion of the minutes from the previous meetings. Again, if you'll look those over, if there are any changes, any, anything you'd like to have added, deleted, that's appropriate based on the meetings, uh, let myself or Ms. Lane know so that we can make those before we recommend approval of them. Um, at this time, I'd like to move on with the discussion of the April 22 financial reports, and turn it over to Ms. Franklin.
Good evening, Madam Bobby.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The general operating account, April 30th, 2022.
Sorry, here.
Okay. Uh, we began the month with 2.77 million. We had receipts of 1.5 million, and we had dispersments of 1.35 million, leaving us a balance in the general operating account of 2.9 million. On to page 27. This is the general fund, uh, revenues, period to date revenues. The school year is eighty-three percent complete, and we have thirteen point two million in general fund revenues, which is eighty-nine percent of the budget, is fourteen point seven nine million. The tax, tax receipts, we are currently at eighty-nine percent of the levy. We have collected eighty-nine percent of the levy. On to expenditures, page 29. We have period to date expenditures of ten point nine million, which is at seventy-four percent of the budget, at fourteen point eight million, general fund expenditures. And fund balance. Page 34. Our April 30th general fund, fund balance is at 4.5 million. I think there are no questions over that. We'll move on to school nutrition, page 109. School nutrition account currently has two hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars. On to. Page 114. Local projects. Uh, we began the month with 2 million. We did have, uh, dispersments of 20,000, leaving us with 1.99 million in the local project account. And that payment was a payment to John Tuten for the kitchen project. Page 117, the money market account. Uh, the only activity, we had 328 dollars in interest for the month of April, leaving us with just over 2 million dollars. And finally, the Georgia Fund One, page 119. Uh, we had swastika seats of 173,713 dollars, which is twenty-five point seven percent increase from April 2021. And we have just over a million dollars, a million thirty-three, thirty-one thousand in the, uh, Georgia One Fund account. Are there any questions?
No, ma'am, I don't have anything.
Thank you, Ms. Tammy.
Good job, ma'am, thank you. All right, our next area would be facilities, if you can get Mr. Masada to come on up here, let's talk about that.
Great evening, Board, it's a pleasure to stand before you tonight. And starting off with our facility report is an exciting project we have, which is our solar project. Um, i- if you're driving by and it doesn't feel like a lot's happening, a lot is happening, um, behind the scenes, meaning that all the bracket systems are being placed on top of Todd Grant. Um, the actual putting on the panels was, is a quick process, but securing those brackets and everything needed to mount the panels is such, um, an important task to do right, and making sure that they're protecting the roof. Um, really happy with the solar company, um, got a call from the elementary school, Ms. Riles, and said, hey, they're making a little noise, they stopped that day, stopped the, you know, and, and changed their schedule around. We're working well with them for testing coming up next week, they're gonna, uh, make sure that everything happens after testing. Um, so that slowed it down a little bit, but they're, they're working hard on it. They're gonna complete the elementary school bracket system first, and panels, and then move over to the middle school. The next step at the elementary school is going to be a short power outage that then will be done after school, where they're gonna actually tie in the system electrically. So, um, that's coming up. I'm hoping to actually see a panel on the roof in the next week or so, so, um, big news with the solar project. We're really excited about it. Any questions?
You mentioned, um, um, the middle school and noise. Um, is there a lot of noise going into the school when they're ever working on the lunchroom?
You know, can't say that there's no noise, obviously, they're banging down walls, but I believe that the majority of the big noise projects are done. The, um, floor coming up, with machinery in there, and, um, the walls coming down, obviously, caused it. But the middle school has been troopers, it is on that other side of the building, so it's, it's kind of far away as you can get, and I think it's gonna be okay. Um, next week, we're gonna talk a little bit about the kitchen project. Um, since we're talking about it, next week's a big week for us. Um, a, a lot of construction going on, but that's interior, it's not the, the most noise possible. Uh, they're going to fill in concrete, where they dug up all the trenches for the plumbing, and then actual construction of the walls and things of that nature, we're really excited about it. I hope tomorrow they're gonna cut out that fifth window, sixth window. Um, they've got the metal bracket in there, and, um, actually seeing it pop through will be a, a real, um, showstopper when you're driving down the road and seeing how symmetrical that's gonna look. Kitchen Project's moving along, um, great, everything's, um, in order. Um, Dr. Pulis is there almost every day, and, um, I'm following him up, and we're watching very closely, and, um, they're doing it right, um, under a, a very close eye.
So you said plumbing, the plumbing's roughed in?
Roughed in, and about to be concreted over, um.
Tomorrow.
So they've tested it, they had a big tank, they said, and, um, made the test, and everything's in order there. That, that's a, the big move, and again, that was the majority of the, can you imagine, cutting up the slabs and everything? So major noise pro- portion has moved on.
Now, Ms. Hewitt, the big, the next big cut for plumbing will happen after school's out, and that's to actually tie it in with the sewage.
Mm-hmm.
So they'll, they'll have to cut all the way down through the parking area to connect it.
If you've had a chance to go by the high school, you'll have noticed that, um, fountain, it's, um, right out there. And if you ever get a chance to go out in the evening time and notice the colors, and it's really magical, I think. Um, I got a chance to go out there and take a look at night, and I was really pleased with it. Um, all the plumbing or the drainage system has been completed. Our crew, um, partnered with Darien Telephone, thank you, and got a catch basin and hooked all the, um, drainage together. And it's been, um, all, the dirt has been replaced. Uh, scheduled with the hydro seed gentleman. Um, today we had a conversation about coming out there, and we're gonna hydro seed in Centipede, and a, a mixture so, so we can get some green out there before, um, graduation. The project's coming together just perfectly, it's gonna really make a, um, statement when you're driving in there.
It's so nice that I guess Robert Todd's class decided to go out and kayak in it.
All right.
Okay.
There was a project on, um, wind speed and, um, kayaking in some wind, it was a heavy wind day, and they, they tested it out, but the, the pond is beautiful. My next item is painting at Todd Grant. As you know, that we are getting ourselves on a very steady schedule of maintenance in the county, and on our five-year plan, every five years, the schools get a painting, and Todd Grant's up for it this summer. Um, a lot of action going on at Todd Grant this summer with painting the whole building, that's including the classrooms, front office, and media center. So, um, a complete paint job where we're not just piecing it or anything. Um, in the hallways, it'll go all the way to the top of the wall, and then in that main vestibule, when you walk in, that long one, there's a, um, ceiling that goes to the, that covers the kitchen, the cafeteria area. So it'll go all the way to that, so you, it looks like it's all the way, um, but not all the way to the very top, it's not needed there. Um, but everything we can say is, um, with that little piece missing, ninety-nine percent, uh, a fresh paint job at Todd Grant, all hallways, all classrooms, all bathrooms.
We're actually, we have one estimate, we're anticipating a second, so that we can gauge where we're at.
The second estimate, um, the gentleman comes tomorrow to do the walkthrough, to give us that second estimate. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, while you're there, can you talk to us real quick about the next area, their Goal Area Three, Culture and Climate COVID Update?
Um, really, really happy to announce we're at zero students, um, in quarantine or staff in quarantine, and no positive COVID cases at the time. But we, I would be remiss to say that we still haven't let off the gas with the safety measures that we put in place. We're still encouraging that hand washing is done as frequently as possible, um, hand sanitizer at all doors, um, social distancing, still to the extent practical. Um, we, we've, uh, modified that, but we're talking about it, and coughing into your, um, arm like this, all the little things that are not just for COVID, but just general health safety, and, um, our protocols are, are not dissolving, um, in that regard. So while we're enjoying a time of little cases and, and little action, we, we're not, um, backing off on our, our safety protocols.
Cool. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next area up here is field trip request for the Skills USA team. Again, that meets our requirement, anytime that it's over 300 miles overnight or out of state. And so we request the Board to consider doing that, that's scheduled for the June the 21st through the 25th, so if the Board would look at that and tell me if you have any questions on that one. All right, so under Goal Area Four, Quality Workforce, um, Teacher Appreciation Week, I actually like to call it Educator Appreciation Week, because there's so many more individuals that are part of that. And that's kicked off today, and other schools have done an awful lot. I have asked Ms. Tammy, and she's working diligently, we'd like to go ahead and release that first supplemental check, uh, by Friday of this week, so we hope to have that done, and, and that's a way ahead of schedule, but we're gonna try to do that to, to bring about a culmination of this appreciation week for our teachers and our pair pros, and all the staff that goes along with it. Um, Retirement Recognition, again, right now we have two anticipated individuals retiring. We have scheduled that for 4:30, just prior to the June 6th meeting, and like we have in the past.
Who? Um, Ms. Tucker, or who?
And then, um, Allison Walker.
That's right.
Okay. I do have personnel, um, actions for executive session, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I would like to pick up on Goal Area Five, Community Engagement, just to talk about it real quick, that the Boys and Girls Club have put in for two grants. Um, the Sandra Deal Grant is a literacy grant, it's primarily focused on the early literacy piece. We had, uh, we're a finalist for that, and a finalist meaning that we're working with community members to do this. And so that's a $25,000 grant, and we should know within the next week if, if, uh, we're able to be the recipient of that. And so, uh, that's a big deal, and, you know, we've talked already about the need for early intervention. a big deal and, you know, we've talked already about the need for early intervention for our three and four-year-olds, we've included our, our kindergarten kids in there as well. There are over twenty students at this time that are attending that and, and they're getting a great, great leg up, um, ready for school, so that's one, uh, and again, that's in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. The second is, the Boys and Girls Club put in for a Twenty First Century Grant, that's, that's around three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, um, we're a finalist for that as well and the nineteenth, we have an interview date set up and hopes to get that and this is a, again, this is a five-year, so do three fifty times five and that's what this could end up being. This is a, again, a huge, huge thing and that's for the after-school program, um, for the Boys and Girls Club and our partnership with providing instruction and mentoring and things along that line, so, uh, some good things going on with our partnership with them. Madam Chair, that's all that's on the agenda and I do, like I said, I have something for executive session.
Okay. Just personnel or...
Just personnel's all I have.
All right. Can I have a motion to go to executive session for personnel?
Same.
Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewitt. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. We'll be back.
All right, thank y'all.
Um, hi. Okay, McIntosh County Board of Education had adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel issues. If I could have a motion to return to open session?
Same.
Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Mr. McOver, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to go ahead and we'll move back up to area one, student success, Olivia Thompson was able to join us, so we want to go ahead and recognize you, so, um, come on up here and we're going to talk a little bit, you know...
You want me to say what I said?
I do, yep, absolutely.
I don't, I don't mind a bit, so, because I want your parents and, and grandparents and, and tutor, really, helper. Um, I, it's important that you know this, that the Young Georgia Authors Contest is put on, it's an annual thing and it's a really big deal in Georgia, every school in the state participates, um, and so it's, it's not only a big deal to win for your school, that would be great, but Olivia not only won for her school, but she also is a placer in our RISA, in our Regional Education, um, and Association and she, uh, we have sixteen districts in our, in our, in our particular RISA, so she was against thousands of students, literally, and, uh, her essay topped out thousands of others and I also told the board and, and people who were here earlier that we are particularly proud of you, Olivia, because not only did you win this prestigious contest, but you also were a placer in the Daughters of the American Revolution. So this consistency in your writing and, um, is just amazing and we're super proud of you, so, you're absolutely...
Y'all can take it.
Hold up, hold up. Got to do one by theirselves first.
Oh, okay.
All right, can we gather everybody up and around? Um, you want to join in after you take a picture?
Yeah. I'll get one or two in there. I have to go.
Come on in.
Oh.
Yeah. By the way, mom.
Thank you so much.
So what was your, what was your essay?
Uh, it was, um, it was called...
The Weight.
The Weight.
The Weight, very good. We gave that to, all the board members to read, so we're proud of you. Parents, again, we're extremely proud of you because she wouldn't be here if it wasn't for your tutelage and support and everything that goes along with it, the love and care allows you to be here, so we're extremely, extremely proud of you.
Well, her D A R essay was about, about Boston massacre, wasn't it? That was last year's. That was last year's.
We'll catch up.
Last year's essay was excellent, I remember it.
Good writing, good writing.
Thank y'all.
Thank you for coming. Absolutely, thank you.
All right, Sandy, you want to start?
Um, I'm just excited that it's May and we're doing testing and honors night and graduation will be around the corner and I'm just thankful that we've made it through, you know, I was having a conversation with, um, someone else yesterday and they were talking about a school system, excuse me, and, um, them, them doing testing and those kinds of things and, and I just kind of had to brag a little bit and I said, well, I'm so excited and she said, well, what do you have to be excited about? And I said, well, the first year of COVID, we were closed from March to May, I said in the second year, we were down at the beginning of the year for a month maybe, and I said this year we were down for two weeks, I said, so we are one of the very few, if any, in our district that have gone to school this many consecutive days during COVID and can still sit here and talk about it, so I'm excited about all that stuff, so I'm, I'm excited about our testing coming up and I'm excited to see what our kids have been able to do in here and not at home. I am, thank you.
All right, cool. I just want to say, um, we're excited, uh, for our kids, especially for the two thousand twenty-two graduates, woo-hoo! Let's do this! And also to our Georgia writers, congratulations, we're happy for you.
And I would like to say congratulations to our writers and also like to thank our teachers for, and our educators for education, they need to rename that.
Education Appreciation.
Yes, and, um, we appreciate everything that you do, um, it's, to just to, to pass by the halls and see everything going on, it's, it's, it's a busy day and, um, and then the teachers that come out at night and we're sitting here, so we appreciate you for everything you do.
Um, congratulations to our young writers, uh, winners, um, I get home, I'm gonna read the, uh, what they wrote.
Yep.
Um, to our educators, I was going to say teachers, but educators, um, and I'm not saying this because I'm married to one, but, um, I've seen many a day where, and, and not just her, but I saw that, she would reach into her pocket, buy copy paper in the past, this was years ago, but I've seen that, um, to copy, you know, her work for the day or test or, and these teachers reaching their pockets, you know, with their, their money to, to help these children out and, um, it's, um, they're special people, very special people, um, you know, educators and cops, they don't make enough money, folks, I mean, they should make do koodles money, but, um, but, you know, thank you to all the educators, y'all doing a great job, thank you.
I'll echo the, uh, the excitement and the gratitude and the, uh, congratulations of all of our other board members and, uh, and just add to that a couple of thoughts, really excited about the success of our FFA and what they've done at the state convention and the success that they had, really looking forward to, uh, just, I don't know why this is in my mind, but with graduation outside again this year, looking forward to that and looking forward to seeing that fountain with the lightning on it at the end of the football field, I think that's going to really add a cool component or an aspect to that ceremony and that experience, looking forward to that and I would be remiss if I didn't point out that, uh, that the primary election is coming up later this month and so, uh, my fellow board member, Mr. McOver and myself will both be on that ballot and we appreciate your vote and support and especially, uh, appreciate the support of the community for our board as a whole, so, thank you.
Again, just to reiterate the significance of contributions that all of our educators have made to make McIntosh successful, uh, it's an amazing school system, we're getting better and better each and every day, appreciate the board for your support and, and like I said, you know, we're here, we have a great vision, we're going to accomplish our mission.
Mr. Bronn closes out.
Yeah, I do want to say something with Kendall getting that award and what a, what a great writer she is and just an engaging young lady, she's so, uh, her essay, she can take any topic and turn it into something witty and kind of quirky and strange and, uh, but I'll have to say that, you know, we promote her and encourage her at home and she's promoted and encouraged by her teachers here at Todd Grant. I just wanted to say, not only teachers, I should say educators with her paraproses too, what an excellent job they've done with her education, I mean, I want to follow back up on that, you got to have it everywhere, if they didn't encourage and promote her here, uh, she might not have been in that position, but she's received that and, and they've just all gotten an excellent education at Todd Grant, I want to, Ms. Riles was here earlier, tell her what a great job she's doing, um, uh, we've really got an excellent elementary school over there, we can be proud of.
Yes.
All right, Ms. McDonald, you have something else? Did you want to say? Okay. All right, everybody else, time. We're adjourned.
Thank y'all.